This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers. Calling this meeting to order, this is the appointment committee of the East Hampton City Council. Thank you for being here. Today we have President Gomez, Omar Gomez, myself, Lindsay Rothschild. Our third member is Matt wanted to join us today. I think we have the minutes from, do you remember what the minutes were from the last meeting? I know we have them. You think so? I mean, they were just like so-and-so's approved. Okay. Only till Brad comes back. So is there anyone from the public, I don't think so besides you guys, that has anything to say about anything not on the agenda? All right. So we have new mayoral appointments before us and we'll start with Tony Manca? Manca or Manca? Manca?
Either way, it doesn't matter.
You know what I mean? Okay. So Tony, you are, you've been nominated, you've been appointed to the Veterans Council. So we just, this is our opportunity, I'll just say this to everyone, it's our opportunity to get to know people working in the city and network, network with each other and get to know each other. And as we, as I've been saying, it takes a village to run a city. So it's really great to see more people coming through. So Tony, tell us why you're interested in serving on the Veterans?
All right. Well, again, I am at a state level as the Massachusetts State Director for the Veterans Chamber of Commerce. And I figured that the things that I'm doing at a state level, I might as well see what I can do at a, at a city level, my backyard, because I do live in East Hampton. So there's a lot of things that's happening, obviously, that at a state level, and I'm very intrigued in what we can do, how I can help at, not only just besides East Hampton, but the surrounding communities as well too and stuff. So there's some urban committee that I'm talking to with regards to what's happening around here. Trying to, actually I was talking to, I have her name, because I butcher it crazy. It is... Oh, my glasses off. And I will butcher her name. Hamada, right? Is that how it is?
Seumara.
Seumara. I, man, I absolutely, so she's the Chief of Staff for the Western Mass Economic Development Council. So I had a meeting with her last month in regards to, you know, what they want to do in order to, you want to call stimulate the economy or economy, but help businesses local, right? So she has a list of veteran-owned businesses within, again, within East Hampton and the surrounding communities. And she talked about like what she wants to do, whereas a lot of these larger companies within our communities, for example, Big Y or some of the energy companies, they purchase a lot of things on a regular basis, but instead of going outside the state or let's say Worcester or Eastern Massachusetts, let's see if those companies here can accommodate the same services or products that they purchase. So and she, she started naming off a whole mess of the larger companies and stuff. I'm like, great. I'm like, but not once did you talk about, you know, Westover Air Force Base and Barnes. I said, that's the Air Force. Even though it's the Air National Guard, it's still the Air Force. And she's like, wow, I never realized that. I go, they probably buy a lot.
Yeah.
You know, so and I, so I asked her, I made the request if I could have her list of all the veteran-owned businesses within the surrounding communities. Obviously, the main focus would be in East Hampton and stuff. And as well as the commonly purchased products that a lot of these larger organizations. And what I want to do for homework is to compare, you know, match the products and services that they buy on a common basis to the specific, you know, I mean, obviously, I focus more on the veteran side and stuff, but it doesn't matter. It could be woman-owned, minority-owned, 8A, it doesn't matter, any of those organizations that say, hey, listen, here's a woman-owned, minority-owned company in East Hampton that can provide those services or products to Big Y or Barnes Air Force Base and stuff. And it's like, oh, that'd be great, you know? I mean, right now, the Air Force as a whole is doing it. It's called the Air Force First Look Program and...
First what?
First Look Program. So Major General Holt, he's a Deputy Commander for the Air Force Materials Command, and Hanscom is one of the largest Air Force Materials Command posts in the United States. So what Major General Holt wants to do is that smaller businesses are having a very hard time penetrating into the federal sector, as you know, right? So what he wants to do is that there's, instead of being the larger contracts or the white whales that everybody sees, those 45 million, 80 million, also, those are great, but you'll never get a chance, especially as a small business. But there's a thing called a micro-purchase, right? So in those micro-purchases, most of the times they're done with a government purchase credit card. They'll go to Best Buy, they'll sit there and buy 10 monitors or whatever, something that's like, hey, it's too much hassle to put it on a contract, we'll just go buy, you know? So the Air Force alone, last year did $1.8 billion in business. So I'll try to speed up, because I know you give me the look.
No, 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 no.
Hurry up, Manca. So what they're, what he's trying to do is, is get those micro-purchases and the small businesses and compare and put them together. So those government purchase credit cards, people, folks, they know where to get those products.
They've got the Rolodex.
Correct. And then they can turn around and help. And then what's happening as well too is now they're, they're also creating an e-commerce site so all those GPC purchasers or purchase cardholders can go straight to this particular website and stuff and purchase all that products from all these people.
Who's making that site?
There's a company in Michigan. It's EPS or something like that is what they're called. So what's happening is that, so it's, it's, you know, getting two birds with one stone. One, the Air Force is still obtaining those products, those GPC purchases, but at the same time, they're hitting their quotas for doing business with small veteran-owned businesses. And it's not necessarily just veteran-owned businesses. They're also doing minority, 8A, women-owned, all that stuff. So and I'm trying to make that happen within our communities and stuff.
Well, that's why I was, you might have saw the look, because I was, right now in our city, we have a grant, the mayor grant with the League of Cities, National Innovations League. And I'm working with her on it to expand our procurement process, because it involves you too, that I knew out of it. I mean, the treasurer, treasurer. To do the exact same thing, but on the city level, like where we want to expand the network in businesses that are, we're purchasing from in the city. So that's a great, so this is why this is like, we like to see people and like know that you're going to be in the Veterans Affairs Council, because we can interface on that topic, which is, that's great.
And honestly, veteran is obviously the designation I'll focus on, but I help everybody, doesn't matter. I'm like an Italian mother-in-law. I make sure everybody's well-fed and make sure everybody's okay. Because I do, I worry about everybody and stuff, especially when I, as soon as I meet somebody, I worry about them, you know? And so there's so many of these small businesses, it's just plain and simple education, making them know like, hey, here's the process in order to do business with the Air Force or do business with some of these larger organizations. Because some of these larger organizations, they have to do business with minority-owned, woman-owned, hubzone, 8A, veteran-owned. You know, so there's a certain percentage that they meet, that they have to meet, you know? So, but yeah, that's, I mean, right now, the Massachusetts Veteran Chamber of Commerce is somewhat new. It was the New England Veteran Chamber of Commerce, but that got disbanded. And now each individual state within New England has their own Veteran Chamber of Commerce. So now it's, we're still, not necessarily in the crawl phase, but it's still getting there and we're slowly getting into the walk phase and stuff, and then we'll ramp things up. But I'm working with a lot of, a lot of the other agencies and stuff. Ray Malato, who's the Director for the Veteran Business Outreach Center, he's, he's, he has a national presence, but he's local, because he's basically in Rhode Island. So and I mean, and as well as, you know, several of the other, like the PTAC, I don't know if you're familiar with Grace Otto, who's the PTAC here at UMass Amherst. She alone can turn around and provide a whole mess of opportunities for all these businesses, yours and all that stuff. So that's her job.
Okay. Well, that's, that's great to hear.
Sorry.
No, no, it's good.
I've got a ton of information to give.
We have time.
We have time, but I just want to make sure, so we do, we make sure that we ask everyone the same questions. And I think usually people, when they come, answer them all in the first question, but in case you're missing anything. So I think you've already answered this, but the ways in which your professional personal experience can contribute to this committee? I think you already covered it. I don't know if you have anything else to add.
One, I mean, 25 years in the military, you know, being a business owner since 2008, you know, so, you know.
What branch of the military?
Army. I was in the Army, so I should have gone another branch, but that's in the story.
My dad would say Navy.
Yeah, I, my dad.
My dad was in the Navy, so.
My dad was in the Army and he spent, that's how he got his citizenship when he came from Italy, is that both him and my mother came from Italy. In order to obtain their citizenship quicker, he joined the military back in 1967. And he, when he found out I was joining the Army, he was, he was not happy. And of course, my brother joined the Army as well too. So he's like, why didn't you go Coast Guard or Navy, something much better? But I mean, it's all, every single, you know, and every one of those branches have their own ups and downs and good to bad.
And I think for us, we are, all of them are a get.
Say again?
All of them are a get, because you said like, we should go in a better one, but for us, Army, Navy, Air Force, all of them, they served to the nation in a, in a good way, so.
If I could do all, if I could do it all over again, believe it or not, it would be the Coast Guard, because the Coast Guard now, they fall under the Homeland Security, so their funding and the things that they do. I mean, I was teaching young soldiers doing anti-piracy missions. They were born in Somalia, so they were, you know, jumping on boats and fighting against pirates and then, who was that? That's a romantic thing.
I'm like, ah, I don't know.
I mean, it was pretty bold.
I could find something better to do on a Saturday.
Well, of course, yeah, I mean, and granted, it's, they were young for a reason. Me now doing that now? No, you can keep that. I'll just, like you said, I'll sit back on the beach and enjoy, enjoy the sun. You can go, you can go play Coast Guard.
And what are other ways you engage specifically with the East Hampton community?
Um, hmm, that's a good question.
And it could be just like volunteerism, school involvement, meetings, events, social media, just cultural events?
Not as much as I should, I'll be honest with that. Both my children went to North Hampton School of Choice. I know, well, it's just, both, both my kids are on the IEP program, so North Hampton had, had a better IEP program and stuff, so. But I mean, but I, hey, volunteering, I don't mind at that. Again, talking to the Urban Development Council and stuff, see what's out there and stuff. And if there's always an event that's there, all I need is like a day, just give me a day and I'll show up and stuff, whatever it is. But, you know, picking up trash to sit in the booth and do bits of reading, so, easy peasy.
Well, great. I think you answered all our questions. Do you have any other questions, Omar?
Can we see the card again?
Yeah, yeah. She's awesome. We actually had the meeting, it was here in East Hampton.
Can I, okay. I want our name to be, pause the picture, because for the procurement project. Hopefully, we'll be working with you on that.
Is this yours?
Yes, that is mine.
All right.
You want to?
We'll just do it.
You want a motion?
Yeah, I want a motion, just to...
I'll move the acting, like, to approve the legal for the Veteran Council, expiration, the December 31st and 4th.
A second. All in favor? Yay, we don't have to roll call anymore.
Yes, you don't have to do both.
Okay, so moved. Okay, so this is how, just, this is, I'm sure you work with government, so you don't vote like this. So the mayor appoints you, and this, those are both, you can motion two, the mayor appoints you, then, and three to, but a little different. And it comes through, our job is to just vet the candidates, so we're the ones that we get, we get the joy of talking to everybody and interacting with everybody. And then our next meeting, which is next Wednesday, we go back and we let the full council know our recommendations. Normally, they go with all of our recommendations and then, then that's when you're confirmed. So you're not confirmed today, you're confirmed, you would be confirmed next Wednesday. And then we pass that back to the mayor's office and that's when they swear you in. So your official confirmation would be next Wednesday. We're the recommenders. Or the vetoers.
And we can tell you that usually when we say yes, the full council's closing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is something we have.
And to be honest, even if I wasn't nominated, I'd still help. I really would. I'd still help. I mean...
Well, I'm going to drag you into the procurement.
Okay. That is, I'm very cool with that.
All right. I'm going to move to Hal. How come?
Can I promote myself to the big table?
Yeah, we just need the big table. Everyone gets to be at the big table.
I didn't want to be presumptuous, but...
Yeah, I know. This is a community room and we're, you know, we're all...
Since we're giving out cards, I'll make you.
Oh, great.
Whoops, I brought four. Okay, we passed one for you.
Cool. Okay, so Hal, you are nominated to the, I mean...
For the Conservation Commission.
Conservation Commission, and actually, I think I have this.
Do you want a card?
I don't, not yet.
Not yet. That's why he has this, say, "No yet."
Here's this letter. So we have your letter, but since you're here, we want to hear from you, because, so why are you interested in serving on the Conservation Commission?
Why?
Yeah.
Um, well, as I mentioned, I moved to town in 2017 and needless to say, with the pandemic, there was a huge timeout in my efforts and involvement. And coming out of that, well, I mean, just, just to back up, you know, I want to have some level of give back to the community and...
Where did you move from?
Seacoast New Hampshire, most recently. Most of my professional life, was that what, on the west coast? Most of my professional life has involved fish in a long shape and form. And I was the Assistant Director of the Small Marine Lab in New Hampshire. And now, sorry, I'm rambling, so get me back on track. Oh, you moved here in 2017, just to deal with your third question before you get to it. Before I was here, I did a bunch of volunteer work with the Kanki National Wildlife Refuge and a little bit with the Connecticut River Conservancy. And then, you know, the pandemic just kind of stopped using everything. So as we have collectively relaxed a little bit more, I've, you know, been looking around for, you know, what can I do to get a little bit more involved? I'm very tired of webinars and online courses. And I saw the opening for a person on the Conservation Commission, and that seemed to be...
A match.
The best match for me, I mean...
Where did you see it? Just curious, because I'm just...
Oh, wait, you know, I think I saw, you know, I mean, I've been in the, in the building, paying my taxes, but I also saw it on the website.
With the city website? Because we've been promoting other places, so I'm just wondering, like, what's...
Yeah, no, 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 I mean, between, you know, a little printed notice, you know, on a bulletin board here in the building and then on the website.
Okay.
What else are you advertising?
No, we have a ta, we were tabling at the farmer's market and we put stuff out on Facebook, because we're just, we're trying to... So I was just wondering if, it sounds like you went straight to the source.
Right, yeah. I'm not much for social media, so, yeah. And, you know, I don't go to the farmer's market because I have farm share over my new farm and I get, I truly, truly buried in what they provide, so.
Yes, I agree.
Yep, so, you know, maybe my focus is a little narrow.
No, it's not, it's great. We just like to know.
Yeah.
So then you wanted, so it was a match, and do, so is there anything else you want to add about why you're interested in joining? I mean, you wrote a lot here, so...
I mean, you know, I just feel like I should participate in the community, and now that I'm retired, I have the time to do that, the motivation to do that. Really, that's, that's most of it. And just given my background as a biologist, uh...
Yeah, so that answers the second question too, unless you have anything specific to add, which I also appear as. What skills do you have to contribute, and you shared about, um... Your academic background, your experience in the ring?
Yeah, I'm deeply steeped in eccleipolitics and, and I have a lot of teaching background, so.
And what other ways are you, do you get involved in East Hampton?
You know, as I said, not so much, given other things that I was doing. Since the pandemic, I helped stuff the barley store on onion bags for the Palm Committee a couple weeks back.
Oh, cool.
You know, that's, that's really...
Well, this is awesome. We love when people that were retiring with so much knowledge and skills and then you like continue to, because we get to benefit from that as a city, so thank you.
Yeah, and I guess the other thing I would mention is, you know, I'll learn a lot from being involved, so that helps.
And that's a highly technical committee, like when I sit out, when I've gone to a few meetings, I realize, you know, not everyone in there has a background in ecology, but a lot of people, a lot of them do and a lot of them don't. Whether or not you do or don't, it's like people bring a great perspective, so it's great that you're bringing that knowledge, because I know that's one where you do need a lot of knowledge in some of the things, the issues that they discuss. Do you have any...
Laura, can you share that?
Who?
Laura?
No, she's on the Agricultural Commission. That's Melissa Cody, I think is the Chair of the Commission. At the meeting, I intended they were discussing the end of Cherry Street and Mount Tom Avenue. There's a, there's a project going on there with drain, storm drainage and we got a miserable vulnerability graph of this state.
Okay, that was on, I sat in on three virtual meetings, you know, around when I applied.
This was early, like months ago. I just remember it was highly technical. I'm like, wow, these people are doing, yeah, this is great. Yeah, I know, that's why I think...
That's why they're technical, that's their resume.
Yeah, that's why it's resume. Yeah, I know, so it's good. No, that's what I'm saying. Thank you for stepping up. So, do you wish...
I want to give them a motion?
Yeah, want a motion.
I'll move to recommend the appointment of all weeks for the Conservation Commission with expiration term of December 31st and 4th.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are going to recommend you, I'm from Houston, to the full council on next Wednesday in the pool table upstairs. Thank you. It was great to meet you.
Yeah, nice to meet you, Coach. Thank you. Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you for volunteering. And now we get to talk about some serious... Jessica's here. We have a new full-time staff member. Not volunteering, but giving her, giving her talents to the city as a new city treasurer. So we don't have, we don't give you the same list of questions. Those are for committees and boards, so. Maybe just, we have your resume, but just as I see her, like a little bit of your background and why you're interested in working for the city.
So I grew up here.
Okay.
I always lived here, except for when I went to college in New Hampshire. I got my degree in finance right out of college. I started working for the town of Hadley as the Assistant Collector there. I was there for seven or eight years and then I moved to Chickaby for work, not living, just working. And I was the accountant there for two years and then the assistant left, so I moved into that position and I've been there for the past 14 years. And so when I saw this come up in my Facebook feed...
Okay.
I had no real intention of leaving Chickaby, because I was perfectly happy there, you know, did my job. Didn't know as much about politics in East Hampton, because I didn't work here, you know, sort of more involved there. And when I saw it come up, I'm like, how can I not? It's, you know, seven minutes from my house, it's my hometown, it's what I do already, although granted, the process is here, a little different. Here I am. I have three boys. They all go to East Hampton schools. One is a soccer player that just won the state championship this year.
Oh, cool. Congratulations. That was cool.
East Hampton? Won the soccer? That's pretty cool.
First soccer state championship ever.
That's cool.
Soccer and be the people. That's very cool.
It determined since he was like 10 that they were going to win states, so very impressive.
I know, even Meredith's family, yeah. It's awesome. Do you have any...
Yes, you mentioned these difference between Chickaby and East Hampton. Can you clarify what is those differences? I know you've been in the U.S. for a week.
Uh, yep, I started last Monday. I started last Monday.
But I'm kind of curious, what's the difference and if those differences are concerning to you?
No, no, it's, it's a smaller city, so I think it's just not... When I first started in Chickaby, they actually had just went to a computerized system. They were on Excel. Everything cash was, like their cashbook, everything was handwritten. So they had just transferred over. The software that they have is more up to date, although I know it's also one of the more expensive software, so the software is a little bit of a learning curve. It's just some of the processes, like, for example, the cashbook, I had it in two different Excel sheets in Chickaby and here it's just all in one. It's nothing, purchase orders here are still handwritten, printed in Chickaby.
Yeah, that would be nice, because those weren't handwritten. I thought the pandemic, or the... Hopefully the pandemic, because I just remember when our IT director started and she was at home and she was in Belter Town. Then she would like drive in to sign a purchase order. And she's like an IT person, she's like, oh...
That must be killing her.
Yeah, I was like, wow, your purchase orders are still handwritten, but, yeah.
And I see that you have some experience with the financial advisors and bond and council. So I think that's really important to be to know, especially that we are in the middle of a process with a new school and you know, the projects that we're having, and so having the right person as a treasurer with that experience for us is really important.
Yep, yeah. We had a lot of, we did a lot of short-term and then it's a long-term one in Chickaby. A lot of roles with the Massey-Cole Modern Trust. I know you're involved in that.
Yes, good. And again, I, I already saw it for the public, they're probably just going to watch the video, that's why I'm asking. I think that's why, what I want. I saw that you usually was a volunteer in the retirement plans. Is any plan that you're going to keep doing that or you're going to try? I, maybe, did you talk to the mayor already to see, that she's going to see us as a representative of her in the retirement board?
I did not ask her yet, but I don't see why I couldn't do it.
Because of Pedro and Amy's doing that, right?
Yeah, but I believe Jennifer was doing it.
Yeah, she was before, yeah. That's why I'm asking, I think he already, I'm questioning you.
Did you get to overlap with Jennifer?
No.
But you have her...
She was in on the interview process and then I actually met with her on Monday night to go over some things, just because I wanted to make sure that there wasn't anything that I was missing. I felt like coming in here without her here, I don't want to be not doing something I'm supposed to be doing. And I know it's only, you know, a little over a week, but I still very conscientious about that.
And I know you, you know better than anyone else, but we're in the middle of the budget process.
Yep.
Is, do you see any huge difference between what you was used to do in Chickaby and East Hampton, was, can you summarize?
So in Chickaby, I was only responsible for my department's budget. In Chickaby, the auditing department collected and did all of the budgets. So it's a little bit different here. I was told at the interview, Treasurer's Office does it, but I know Pedro has done it since Jennifer's been on. So, but I did, you know, asked him to help out, even though it's kind of at the end of the process, just to learn a little bit.
And I, again, I saw you, education background, I asked you about cosmetology instead of other one, because my daughter went for the same, for the same license. I forget, is, do you want to add something else for the public to know you better, a little bit more? You have a bachelor degree, right?
I do, bachelor's degree in finance.
I was just going to add that an important part, I think, of a city treasurer is be able to come to meetings, like the city council meetings, committee meetings, and breaking down in like common language for the public and for the councilors. You know, what the numbers mean, and I was just wondering if you enjoy that part of the job or like, did you do much of that in Chickaby?
I did, because in Chickaby, it's an elective position. And the treasurer there has now, has been there for eight years, but when she first started, she didn't have any experience. So I've been to all of the city council meetings, anytime we had an order on there, anytime there was a finance. So, and I did have that experience, just to sort of help her out.
Yeah, good. I know, I always appreciate when Jen...
Probably not my favorite, but you know, we all have to.
Great, yeah. And that's definitely an asset that Jen brought, and look forward to learning from you as well, to break down. For some of this budget process. All right. No, do you have any questions?
Just, I mean, obviously, as things go along, I didn't mean, I didn't...
No, 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 go with it.
As things go along and stuff, obviously, I'll, I'll ask a lot of questions on this, because I'm, I'm certainly not afraid to ask questions, because if I don't know, I don't know, so. So, I mean, and please forgive me in advance, because I do ask a lot of questions.
Okay, I don't have any questions.
Oh, good.
You want to make a motion? I'll move to recommend the appointment of Jessica.
Heber?
Heber, Heber for the City Treasurer, expiration term May 1st, 2025.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
So I get, didn't say about the... No, um, so like, we need to say about the process, so Wednesday, she's going to do a report, the appointment committee, do a report, she's going to do a morning, but and the council by then have, they have their own questions if they want, usually they don't, it's possibly someone sees something in the Wednesday, and it will say, I have a question at the last minute, so we're going to, so.
That's different for a staff, full-time staff. You're welcome, so.
I mean, you guys are welcome, too.
Questions come up, it's usually about the full-time salary people. Handling our city's budget.
So be ready.
Yep, thank you, good to meet you. And we had one more appointment, Sarah.
Two more.
Two more, sorry. Yeah, Sarah, Bonnie didn't answer me, that's why I don't know. So Sarah Carr, who's also to the Conservation Commission, so great, two new things. So I'm just going to read her answers shortly. Why are you interested in serving on this committee or board? I bought a house in East Hampton about four years ago. I'm a big nature enthusiast and have been grateful to partake in all the amazing hiking and conservation lands around East Hampton. I want to give back my time to help protect wetlands. I'm also looking to gain experience in the field of environmental science. Number two, in what ways do you see yourself being able to contribute to this committee? I'm currently doing a bachelor's degree in environmental science at Westfield State. I took environmental legislation this spring and began to learn about both the Federal Clean Water Act, section four oh four, and the Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act. While I'm no expert, I probably know a bit more than your average citizen. I'm also an investor in a private camp in, in Tolon, Mass, for which I've done a fair amount of research on conservation easements, chapter sixty-one, and carbon credits. In regards to people's skills, I've been a psychotherapist for a couple of decades and a couples therapist for about seven years. Before and during that, I did a lot of administration, management, et cetera. What ways do you engage in the East Hampton community? Currently, I don't have much involvement in East Hampton beyond paying my real estate taxes and voting. I do keep track of local happenings and next door. Until COVID, I rented an office in the Button Building for my psychotherapy practice and I own a two-family house, so I feel pretty invested in the community. I had a bad accident a few months ago and buying this house, which let me unable to walk for about six months and hobbling for a year. And I was caring for my dying mother with Alzheimer's, so there wasn't, hasn't been much time for volunteerism. With classes over and COVID sliding behind us, hopefully, there's finally some time.